Yes.
I need the sketches, but I actually don't have them. I'm actually not a fan of them. Why did I just pronounce something?
I have a record to see. I just have to see. If I don't have a record.
Yeah, and that's, you know, but I mean, I think ladies and gentlemen. Usually that's what they were.
So the plans were thirty plus the chief is thirty ninety.
I knew it was written.
But so on top of her regular, you said, you know, nothing, the highest is once a year forty-five.
What is that to one? She misses one thirty and that's no.
With her dues. Thirty-nine. So her dues are only one oh nine or one oh eight, something. Yeah. Yeah, but. Yeah, I mean, with two hundred dollars as well. Scott's words of advice. They don't matter.
And that's part of.
And I think that's really funny.
I do too.
Hey, thanks for coordinating.
Look at you here.
What are your plans? You hear Nancy's retiring in the hall. Well, you know. Just saying, you know, people helps hire for that decision. The soda chair advice. Now you've got to help.
You can imagine he's shaking her songs.
I mean, things happen for reasons, right? Um, there's advocacy work you can do. There's advocacy work you can do. But like an off schedule. Okay. This is.
What I can say is that I don't need to.
I mean, yes.
It is a monster and I know that.
And the committee is. Delegate down that. But then. But they just. And just the membership chair.
Welcome everyone to the fifth day in November nineteen twenty seven. We have six or seven trustees present at all of our meetings. Uh, we always begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to stand with us.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of recognition is a very exciting one to recognize Hamilton Elementary as a national ribbon school. This is great one.
All right, thank you. It is very exciting. Great to see so many great places on Hamilton. Young and old here tonight. We were really excited to be able to honor and recognize Dr. Rucker and the team at Hamilton. We're pleased to recognize the school this evening for their designation as a national ribbon school. This award honors them as being one of the very best schools in the United States. Hamilton is recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardone at a ceremony in Washington, D.C. on November seventh, May. Only three hundred fifty-six schools from around the world. And the country we're, I'm sorry, around the country we're chosen to be honored in twenty twenty-four. This award firms the hard work of students, staff, parents, and Hamilton community. The National Blue Ribbon Award is a testament to exceptional achievements of students and educators at each of these schools. U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardone said in the press. The twenty twenty-four National Blue Ribbon Schools are raising our foundation students serving as models for effective teaching and intentional collaboration in their schools and communities. As we celebrate their achievements, let us look to these schools for inspiration as we champion education as a combination for a brighter future for every child. We'd like to congratulate the Hamilton community and especially Dr. Rucker as the leader of this school. I would like to invite Dr. Rucker.
Good evening, Dr. Macheski and the Troy School District School Board. Thank you for taking the time to celebrate the Hamilton Elementary Team as a twenty twenty-four National Blue Ribbon School for exemplary high performance. First, I'd like to thank you, our board and central office leaders, for challenging us to meet a simple yet demanding vision of ensuring learning for all children. And also providing us the resources and constant support we need to work towards this ambitious goal. Your trust in us as professionals is truly appreciated. I also want to thank our Hamilton families for continually collaborating with us as partners and the children of their most precious assets, their children. Together, we work hard to help our kids become the best versions of themselves. And of course, I'd like to express my deep gratitude for the Hamilton staff. Their work ethic and their love for kids is unrivaled, as you can see by the crew here today, both current and retired, which is pretty cool. Each and every day, they go above and beyond to help kids reach their full potential in both character and academics. It's been the greatest honor of my career to do such rewarding yet challenging work with such an outstanding team of people. I'm so thankful and proud of the difference they make in the lives of kids every day.
We have a lot of people who hold that banner, so if we can have our Hamilton staff come on up. Congratulations. Congratulations, Dr. Rucker and the Hamilton team. Thank you for our retirees joining us today. I always appreciate you being there. Our second matter of public recognition this evening is for a different set of awards, but nonetheless important as. Kendra Montanti is going to introduce her team who helped tell the story of excellence across the Troy School District. So Kendra, if you'd like, please come up.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski. Could all the members of my team please come up? So I'm honored to share that the communication team received fifteen Michigan School and Public Relations Association's awards. They're called ENSRA awards, the most the team has ever received. These awards are a true testament to the collaboration that can be seen in this department. I would like to thank Melissa Verdun, Thomas Butcher, Adam Burns, Linda Alfonso, Patrice Robel, who out of retirement, joined us this evening. And our newest member, Allison Hendry, hopefully she's up here too. You, no. These awards would not be possible without their hard work and dedication to one Troy. The team was recognized with three Awards of Excellence and twelve Awards of Merit in the following categories. Awards of Excellence for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion category for elevating voices in comfortably uncomfortable conversations podcasts. Marketing Materials category for early college with LPU. Special Purpose category for coffee with the superintendent. Awards of Merit for Marketing Materials category for the Career Accelerator Program. Marketing Materials category for College and Career Fair. Marketing Materials category for Summer catalog, summer school catalog. Newsletter category for TSD News Supplement Spring twenty twenty-four through Summer twenty twenty-four. Special Purpose category for the Board of Education Community Conversation. Special Purpose category for Smith Middle School Orchestra. Video category for Y Flexible Seating. Video category for Danielle Clipper Outstanding Support Staff twenty twenty-four. Video category for Autism Acceptance Morris Friendship Cookies. Video category for Beyond Flying Drones with Jack Kelly. And video category for Celebrating Manufacturing Day. Audio Podcast category for Inside TSD with Dr. Rich Macheski, June twenty twenty-four. The team received their awards in October and will be recognized at the ENSRA Conference in March. The Troy School District is incredibly proud of the Communications Department for these outstanding achievements. These awards not only highlight their creative talent, but also their dedication to effectively sharing the stories and successes of the Troy School District. We are fortunate to have such hardworking, passionate team members contribute to strengthening the bond between our schools and the community. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to world-class excellence. So thank you.
So that's it for recognition. We're going to take a five-minute break. If you're welcome to stay for the business of the board, if you'd like to come to the house tonight, this is a perfect time to exit. So we'll be back in action in a while.
I don't think it's. Yeah, like the revenue. Yes. Um, okay, real list. It's. So it would be like one name. The big will fit.
I don't think that's a bad deal. It doesn't, but that's a question. And I asked.
That doesn't answer the question.
I'm going to have the.
What does M A M E S mean?
So you saw. She's an amazing.
She feels it.
I'm going to ask her and I'm going to say, I don't know children.
No, but maybe she can practice.
It's going to happen. Task case. I mean, this is terrible. That's what I mean. Need a task case. And now it's like, am I covered or am I? As they show, somebody take litigation. That's what I'm saying. I should be covered because it's a timing cycle for payments for a full year's.
Yeah.
And I should have some.
So there's. A rainy area.
Yep.
So that should be, I think that is a very.
But you heard it.
And that is an exact. Do you really, are we not? Then that means before we do that.
That's where we don't.
Yes.
Or I think there's a way.
I mean, that might make people want to stay.
Uh, then this is the general content agenda. This consists of the A, the minutes of the October first, twenty twenty-four, or the meeting workshop. C, the minutes of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, or the meeting meeting. C, the treasures report from September of twenty twenty-four. And D, uh, the decision to reschedule January seventh, twenty twenty-five for workshop until January fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I may have a resolution, please. Mr. Hoff, see if there are four results that the Troy Board of Education takes action to provide items A, B, C, and D on the. Resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hoff. Any questions that come into question today? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, resolution passes. Now moves us to personnel. There's none seating. Thank you, and then to curriculum. One item seating. Is this a lot, this is three more?
Good evening. Here we are again with our data slides. As Christine is pulling that up, we appreciate the board's time at our last workshop. We went into a really in-depth analysis of our student achievement report. And really wanted to share with the board how we use some of these tools to, to inform our school improvement and district improvement plans. Just to clarify, this is not an exhaustive list of every data set that we have. We really want the community to understand we have overview of understanding, sort of that idea of summative informative assessments. We use, summative would probably be the most, or I would say maybe the least impactful in terms of the day-to-day instruction that happens with our students. But it's important for us from a curricular standpoint in ways that we can adjust this system as a whole. And as we kind of zero in on the classroom instruction or those formative assessment pieces, that's where we begin to have those pieces in terms of how they influence the children and the day-to-day experiences. Again, just kind of recognizing some of the limitations of the summative data. We look at these pieces in kind of three different parts. So we look at our, our students and cohort and track how they do as, as a group. We look at some comparative insights and how we measure up to other districts in the county and state. And then really looking in, in zeroing in on our students in terms of what happens for their specific performance insights in the classrooms. So again, high level overview, this is looking at our ELA M stuff, and this is for grades three to seven. This is sort of a complicated graph, so I'll just kind of narrate just a bit what this is looking at. You notice the percentage of those dots in the, in the center of the bars that represents what is our free reduced lunch rate? And we keep an eye on that in the sense that districts that have a higher free reduced lunch rate typically have a lower student achievement. And so we're always looking to kind of make sure we're outperforming our demographic and sure that our students are achieving at higher levels. So we are proud to be able to be at the top of our, our county here. You can see represented in the green is sort of our average at, at green bar. And we are represented in the brown bar on the left at sixty-five percent. Again, this is a aggregate, this is a high level view at our ELA scores. But again, just looking at our performance over time and, and looking where we situate in terms of the, the county. Looking at, or did you want to add anything, Christine? I'm sorry. Um, looking at math, I didn't recognize that you switched slides, sorry. Looking at math again, we, we look at where we situate in terms of the county. We're proud to be here. What we are really watching for is the number that's represented in red or dark pink at the bottom. So if we look at our mathematics going from right, from left to right, we see a slight decrease from that sixteen percent into the, just, just below fifteen percent of students who are not proficient. Moving up toward that either partially. The next couple of slides launches into our eighth grade PSAT data. So what's helpful for us in the middle school is that in eighth grade, we align our, it's disruptive yet helpful. So in seventh grade, we end our M step trajectory and we move into PSAT eight. The PSAT eight is then aligned with the assessments that student take, students take from eighth grade through eleventh grade. So it allows us to follow a cohort of students in a similar test. And so what we see here is our students are continuing to, continuing to progress at a pretty consistent rate. There's not a huge disruption. We see that we grew and, I'm sorry, we see that our students continued to go along a pattern that was pretty consistent when it comes to ELA. And in mathematics, you'll see a very similar slide. Though our, our numbers did come down a little bit in math, we also see that that followed the pattern for Oakland schools and for the state of Michigan. Oh, sure. Yes, thanks for that question. So on the far left-hand side, you'll see the twenty eighteen nineteen school year. That is the last school year that we assessed students before the pandemic. During the nineteen twenty school year, we did not take any assessments. During the nineteen twenty school year, we did not take any assessments, um, at all in the state of Michigan. And then in the twenty twenty-one school year, which is also missing from here, it was an optional assessment year. So that data is available on my school data, the twenty twenty-one school year, but it does not represent all of our students. It was optional, so only specific students chose to take it. So those scores are really not representative of our, our entire school community. So we pick up in twenty-one, twenty-two where it became required once again for our students. So thank you for that question. This is a similar slide to what Mrs. Greifor was talking about and looking at, um, when it comes to free and reduced lunch. It's, um, a little bit differently shown here. Again, we get these from the county, so they're not all formatted the same way. In this chart, what you'll see is the bar chart at the bottom identifies the percentage of free and reduced lunch, um, for our, um, eighth grade, our eighth graders in the district and where we perform, um, based on, so the blue line there indicates our achievement in, um, in ELA and the red line indicates our achievement in mathematics. And, and the other dots represent different districts throughout the county. The county average is in the dark green in the center.
Yes.
Is the third through seventh grade, um, the phonetically disadvantage in the. This is around fourteen percent. Is that based on the.
Correct. Yes, this is for our eighth grade cohort. Would be the, the aggregate for the three to seven. Our slides continue on to follow our students in our summative assessments through eleventh grade. So this is our, um, this is our scores, uh, our aggregate scores for the Troy School District, including Troy High School, Athens, and Troy College and Career and their performance on the, um, evidence-based reading and writing section of the SAT. Our students, um, continue to perform at a consistent level across. And you'll see the same thing in mathematics. Um, one of the things that we did share and is worth maybe talking about just for a moment during our, um, our lengthy, our two-hour conversation about data with the board last week, um, we talked about what wasn't visible in these slides and some of the work that we're taking on, um, as a district. And one of the things that we talked about was recognizing the students who are not performing and not meeting standards and that our focus as an organization is on moving our students who are not, not meeting those standards above, uh, proficiency. And that work, um, is, um, happening through, um, our partnership with NSK twelve. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we start to talk about formative data. But how are we serving and supporting our students with disabilities? How are we, um, looking at our structures for intervention for our students? Those are all questions that we're asking to be able to increase our proficiency, um, on these assessments. This is our overall performance on the SAT. So the overall, um, measure is for students who meet or exceed expectations in both ELA and mathematics. And again, this is for the aggregate group of Troy High School, Athens, and Troy College and Career High School. And then finally, this last slide that mimics the PSAT slide, this is our, um, SAT achievement, um, for students, um, again, in red in mathematics and in blue in ELA with the free and reduced lunch for fourteen percent for our eleventh grade group as well. So as previously mentioned, we wanted to share just ways that we use this information in terms of improvement and as a, as a whole. Um, we talked about, we tend to talk in acronyms. So MTSS are our multi-tiered system of support. We talked about ways that we're collaborating and really thinking about ways that we're challenging ourselves. So we're extremely proud of our high achievement. We want to continue to find ways that we are, um, challenging, um, our students that are advancing. And as Ms. DiPlato said, looking to make sure that we're ensuring learning for all of our students. And so some of those areas of focus that we talked about is ensuring that those students that are not progressing, making sure they have access to tier one instruction, access to content, strong teachers, and access to additional time, um, for that learning. Additionally, we always work to train our staff to properly situate in terms of, um, ensuring their learning in terms of how we are, um, advancing our, our student achievement as well. The second piece of data that we're looking at is really, um, whereas, uh, the summative piece is really, um, looking at students that previously took a test that's kind of a one-time snapshot, looking at ways that we use that formatively and ways that it's more, um, influencing their, their day-to-day. Um, we talked about just, just a quick overview of our multi-tiered system of support and how our staff collaborates. We're looking at ways that these, that our staff on a regular basis is meeting to huddle and talk about students and think about ways that they are supporting one another as they, uh, support the, in meeting the needs of, of the children. MTSS time or multi-tiered system of support time, we're working to make sure that our staff is having, um, the opportunity and time built in to look at building level trends, to talk about all children, not just some of them. Um, bringing students with IPs to discuss scheduling. And there's a variety of ways, um, that our staff is looking to celebrate and, and review information again with, with the team that is huddling around those children. So ways that we, we wanted to share kind of how that, that data shows up on a regular basis for, for our staff at the building level. This is our, um, we are required to provide also three times per year, um, with, uh, alignment with the third grade reading bill. We're looking to make sure that our students on a regular basis are receiving more ongoing, um, assessment in terms of reading. And so just kind of at a glance, again, we're, we're excited and proud of our data to be, um, meeting the needs of the children, but thinking about ways that we're meeting the needs of all of them. This is our fall data. We'll do this again in the winter and then again in the spring to monitor that progress along the way. And then again, in math, um, this is just, again, a snapshot or a glance at, um, this year's data as well. So really making sure that this is, again, at the aggregate kind of district level, but really being able to zoom in each, uh, principal and classroom level teacher has this, this glance, um, as well, uh, as it relates to their building and progress. One of the areas of formative assessment that we've introduced across, um, secondary this year is the NWA assessment for mathematics. We are using that in grades six through algebra one. Um, it's a universal screener that we, um, again, it's that we're in our first full year of implementation. Last year, we had a few pilot classrooms that, um, took on the NWA. This is a measure that will help us to be able to track our student progress, but also is something that, um, is being used by our specialists, our math specialists, to be able to intervene and support students. We actually have a couple of folks who are here in the audience today who would be able to speech, speak much better to this work. They're taking it on every day, um, in being able to support our students. This is just a snapshot of what a classroom teacher would be able to see. Um, this is a ninth grade classroom at Athens High School in Algebra One, um, where teachers will be able to dig in and, um, better understand where their students are proficient or where they might need additional support. So our teachers have been receiving support and training in, uh, NWA this year, and it's something that we will continue to grow into as an organization. In ELA, we've leaned into the Common Lit assessment. And again, we've got some folks behind us who would be great people to answer these questions about the work and how it's being implemented in our classrooms. Um, Common Lit is actually not only being used as a benchmark assessment tool for us to be able to look at student progress, um, with a starting point, but it also has, um, units that can be used. And we've adopted those units in some of our intervention structures throughout the secondary, um, part of our organization. So you can see here, this is a sample of what the classroom report would look like for Common Lit. If I were a seventh grade teacher, that's what this is looking at in a seventh grade classroom, I would be able to see how my students, um, are faring on any one of these standards and then be able to dig in or reflect on my lesson perhaps and recognize that seven point four, most of my students are doing very well. So either I taught that very well, or they came to me with that prior knowledge, right? Depending on when I'm using that as. So in terms, again, we went through this at Nazia with our, with the board at the last meeting, um, but we really wanted to be able to share with our community just again, how we use this in terms of district improvement, um, looking at both summative and formative pieces to improve our process and improve, um, those experiences for our students. Do you have a few, um, data points that we use for our celebration? For the ever increasing enrollment at the preschool. It's really exciting. That's really our first layer of, um, what we call MTSS, like I mentioned, and providing, um, access. And we really appreciate the support of the board and, um, in, in how we've, uh, just been able to navigate that as a group. These students having access to preschool, we know really better situates those experiences. We expect that number to continue to grow with universal preschool supports and is something that we're really proud of here in the district. At the International Academy East, we, um, do study and watch our, um, IB diploma acquisition. And last year, we had a little blip in the screen and, um, uh, Mr., um, uh, Mr. Griffin, which I was gonna call Mr. Greifor. Mr. Griffin. I was gonna marry him off to you. Uh, Mr. Griffin over at IA, um, with Ms. Naas spends quite a bit of time working in collaboration with the other two campuses to look at our acquisition rates. Um, and the teachers last year had a goal in being able to bring back and improve upon those full IB acquisition rates. And we can see that they've started to come back, um, from last year's group. I'm sure Narada will be contributing to some very high scores as we think about the end of this coming year. What's important to know is this is about the IB, um, diploma. This is not about the Troy School District diploma. So one hundred percent of our graduating class of twenty twenty-four. Year to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we saw, um, a significant amount of growth in our students participating in our AP courses. The first, um, row across that looks at college culture, um, looks at the percentage of students in a graduating class who took an AP exam at any point in their high school, regardless of score. So I think it's pretty incredible to reflect on the numbers that are represented here, which is seventy percent of the graduating class of Athens High School and seventy-five percent of the graduating class of Troy High School took an AP exam at some point during their high school career. Uh, we know that, um, students participating in those courses are exposed to different structures that give them a higher level of preparedness for success in college. And so we're really great, we're really glad to see that we have students who are pushing themselves to try and experience and not just take the class, but also take the exam. Because we do have students who might take the class and then say, I don't know if the exam's gonna be right for me, but they've pushed themselves. They've embraced being a risk taker and, and taken on that exam. Um, the college credit, um, row that's, um, that's, uh, following it is about any student who, in the graduating class, who scored a three or higher on one of their AP exams. So you can see that, um, a three or high, a three or higher, um, often provides students with college credit. So that's an indicator of success for us when we're looking at student success. And then the college optimization is the percentage of students who took five or more AP exams where at least one of the exams was taken in ninth or tenth grade. And the reason that, um, the college board values that is because the college board values having your experience spread over four years and not having five or six APs in your junior year or your senior year. Um, and that, um, they, so they really do look for that spread in the experience. We have about a quarter and a third of our senior class taking five or more of those exams with one of them being in ninth or tenth grade. So, um, we know that this is a very important data point for our community and we will continue to, to watch this. As part of our APs, one of the things that we're studying specifically is our enrollment in, um, eleventh grade AP English. And this is because of our changes in our AP curriculum, um, I'm sorry, our changes in our ELA curriculum at the high school. Um, the juniors this year, we have forty-two percent of the junior class is enrolled in AP, um, AP eleven ELA. These students are students who may have participated in one of our pilot classrooms in ninth grade and then the pilot ran for them in tenth grade and now they're in eleventh grade. Next year's juniors will be the students who took the new curriculum in, all of whom took the new curriculum in nine and in ten. So this is just enrollment data, right? So we, we haven't seen performance data from this group, but we'll be looking at that as we go into next year to see how they've performed this spring. And then we'll be watching for that enrollment again as we go into the, uh, fall of next year. Our seal of biliteracy is a new data point that we're continuing to watch. We know that throughout our, uh, community, um, we have a wide variety of languages and we value very highly, um, the different cultures that are represented in Troy. A seal of biliteracy is something that a student can test to be able to demonstrate and earn that seal on their diploma. Um, it is definitely something that is, um, you know, favorable for students to be able to carry forward and talk with employers about. For many of our students, they aren't eligible for that seal of biliteracy until their senior year. Um, and so we want to make sure that more students are aware of it and they work with their high school counselors to learn about if it's available to them based on the language of their study. This is a data point that we are incredibly proud of here in the Troy School District. Um, this is our graduation rate of students who have graduated in a four-year cohort at Troy College and Career High School. So, um, back in twenty nineteen, um, this board made a commitment to purchasing the Troy Learning Center and relocating, um, Troy College and Career High School from Niles to a new facility. Um, that commitment from this board, um, allowed that program to begin to really rethink itself. And I think started, like, I don't think, it's evident, um, started, um, a revolution there, right? And we've seen, um, just great leadership and a change in programming where we've seen, um, our graduation rate grow from thirty-two percent to eighty-three percent last year. Last year, we graduated the largest class out of T, CCHS that they've ever graduated. Um, we've been housing it at the Troy High School auditorium and we talked about last year, we felt like we were tight, like we might need a bigger space in our future. So that's something that we're very hopeful of, but I think also speaks to the incredible culture that Angela Malanov has said at TCHS. And I know that Christian would speak of also enjoying that there. Um, the last piece that we would love, wanted to celebrate and add here was, um, you know, we have a very robust career and technical education program at both of our high schools, um, in the Troy School District. It's something we're very proud of. Many of those programs are listed in those squares there. Um, we had more than two hundred and ninety students, um, from the class of twenty twenty-four earned completer status. And that means that they completed the full trajectory of these, um, uh, CTE course, um, courses that are linked together. So they didn't just dabble a little bit here and a little bit there, but they saw it from beginning to end. And for many of our students, that's a series of four courses that they're taking to be able to demonstrate their knowledge at the end and earn that completer status. So something that we are also very proud of. And that concludes our program. We, um, we also just want to express our gratitude. We, we shared this at, um, at the workshop, but this is the work of so many and, uh, our staff is incredibly devoted as our parents. And, um, just that partnership is incredibly important to our students. Um, we have really high standards here. We're proud of our, proud of our students and excellence, um, that, that these four show clearly, but we always are in a, in a cycle of continuous improvement and, and we're proud to be able to showcase the work of our staff today.
So I know we talked about this quite a bit last week. Did anybody remember? It's a couple of things. One, um, when we look at the math, PSAT eight, so the, the scores that are under now are not with full representation of our, um, early math. So what year are we looking at in terms of the PSAT? Will it have a full representation of, um?
So this year's seventh graders, um, will move into eighth grade next year. And so at the end of their eighth grade year next year, that will be our first cohort that has gone all the way through with three years of our math curriculum. So it would be in the spring of twenty twenty-six that we would be looking at how our students, well, the spring, we're watching constantly. But the three, spring of twenty twenty-six will be our first cohort of students who have gone all the way through three years with that, um, IM curriculum.
And then, uh, in terms of, uh, because AP or English isn't, you know, we're going to move into changes. So, um, you did mention that we'll be looking at, at, we'll be, um, we, not in twenty twenty-five, but twenty twenty-six. So the AP eleven English exam from twenty twenty-six are going to be, if, if, or, you know, will be one day at a point.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. You're awesome.
I had to hold out for a couple of months before I really loaded it up here. So thank you and good evening, Board of Education. Uh, tonight, we do have our fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial audit for presentation. So, um, if you could, welcome Michael Walsh, Senior Manager from Clamberin. He's gonna go through this, um, presentation and then subsequently that we will have a consideration to formally accept that. So the next slide just shows that those general fund expenditures, that same pool on the previous slide breaks it up by function as defined by the state of Michigan. So this is really looking at, you know, where are these dollars, what department effectively are these dollars going to? So as you can see there, direct instruction makes up the largest percentage at 65%. These are the primarily teacher, teacher costs and costs directly in the classroom. Just for reference there at the top of the slide here, you'll see that Oakland County average. There's always kind of a year lag on this, but the Oakland County average for fiscal year 23 was about 60%. So you see Troy at 65%, certainly, certainly much higher than the Oakland County average and really focusing on spending those dollars in the classroom.
Again, I just heard the public, for the last 13 years, we've had that same spec. We're always at the top of the calendar in terms of money, the amount of money is at indirect instruction relative to less than the school districts. That's a point high for us and we put every available dollar in the instruction.
The second largest piece there is that indirect instruction at about just under 14%. Those would be counselors, librarians, you know, other personnel that kind of help students just outside the classroom. So really, when you combine those two, you're looking at about 80% of instruction-related expenditures. A lot of the other departments there that you see there, really, if you look at this, really for the past couple of years there in terms of from a percentage standpoint, it's pretty consistent with historical percentages, plus or minus about 1%. So the next few slides, just want to talk a little bit more about just some comparison to some prior years and a couple key metrics that impact school finance. So the first slide here just shows Troy, the per pupil membership, which is that line graph, or sorry, the per pupil membership, which is the bar graph, and then the foundation allowance set by the state, which is the line graph. So kind of moving left to right here, we start with 08, 09. That was just more just for reference, that was the kind of the first year, a year prior to a very significant cut in that foundation allowance that was seen across the state. So it really took until 2019, 2020 school year for that foundation allowance to then get back up and exceed what that foundation allowance was in 08, 09. Kind of moving forward, we see kind of the trend is really 21 to 22 through 23, 24, we've seen some pretty significant increases in that foundation allowance across the state for those last couple of years. And then into 24, 25, we're expecting that foundation allowance to remain steady. There's some other funding mechanisms that's going to provide some other funding sources in the state, but the foundation allowance for all school districts is expected to stay flat.
So the net effect of the future, after we gained about 5.3%, is that correct? So in terms of functional dollars, we're actually about $550 more per person this year than last year. So this type obviously suggests that we're flat and we actually captured a 5.2% increase over last year.
Yeah.
In motion dollars.
Yeah, there's additional funding going to retire costs that's going to offset or expand additional funding for districts. So that is.
And my second question is for all these diversities and inflation adjustment.
Correct, correct, yep. Yep, so this is just, yeah, flat, flat true dollars, no inflation impact, which as you can imagine from 08, 09 to today is.
Yeah.
Yep. So, and then on the bar graph side, just from an enrollment perspective, so in 2020, just want to point out in 2020 to 21, you see that super blend kind of comment at the top there. So just as a reminder, kind of coming out of the pandemic, the state identified and was aware that, you know, they were expecting pretty significant decreases in enrollment. So to offset that from a funding perspective, they allowed districts to weigh their enrollment pre-pandemic, from pre-pandemic levels in their 2021 year, which was really just a one-time fix. So then in 21, 22, the weighting went back to kind of the original scale post-COVID enrollment figures. And so that's why you kind of see that drop in 2021 to 21, 22. So just kind of wanted to point that out. And to kind of look at the overall enrollment trend over the past couple of years.
And then one last question, I think we're going to do this forecast for this year. How far off are we from all these, is it 12, 35, or?
Is that 60 right now?
Or about 60 below is that, or about?
Yeah, Michael, is that the traditional calculation or is that just a fall number?
That's based on the first state data report from, so, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a fall number, but then it gets blended with the spring.
Oh, I was gonna say, our fall number is, oh, you were right, 112.
Yeah.
We did a period actually.
And I'm sure as part of that analysis and the trend there is really consistent with what we can see across all our school districts across the state is from an enrollment perspective. There's just generally a declining birth rate seen across the state, really across the US that's driving a lot of those projections. So this slide, just kind of want to quickly compare Troy schools in terms of funding from a foundation allowance perspective to some of its peer districts in Oakland County. So, you know, kind of starting from the top there and so the state's at the lowest funded districts at a $9,608 per pupil floor for 23, 24. So that was an increase, a minimum increase of about $458 per student, per pupil. For Troy, they would have received a $520 per pupil increase in 23, 24 to that $10,394 per pupil dollar amount that you see there. So Troy's kind of really right in the middle there, you know, $10,000 per pupil compared to, you know, the Birmingham Bloomfields at over $13,000 per pupil. So just, just kind of wanted to show that from our analysis. So kind of wrapping everything up from a last slide perspective, really wanted to focus on the general fund fund balances of June 30, 2024 and kind of compare that over the past 10 years. So as of June 30, 2024, the district had about $36.7 million of fund balance. A common metric there that you see on that line graph is fund balance as a percentage of total expenditure. So the district came in at about 19.21% from that metric. Just a couple of comparison metrics here as well. The statewide fund balance as a percentage of expenditure average for fiscal year 23, you're kind of a year, year lag behind until that information's available. That came in at 21.86% for fiscal year 23. So Troy had 19.21% for fiscal year 24, it's just under that average. And we continue to see that average kind of to bump up. So the 2020 average from a statewide perspective was about 20.3%. So you kind of see that 1% increase year over year and we've kind of seen that trend, which is really consistent with what we're seeing here at Troy for 21 to 24. You know, a lot of districts have had the benefit of those COVID dollars and those not recurring, those non-recurring COVID dollars and we've seen fund balance increase. So again, pretty consistent trend with the state, just under that statewide average. But really, when you look at it from a 10-year perspective, you know, Troy's never dipped down below $20 million of fund balance in any of those years. That fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures has always been about 15%. So really just demonstrating strong fiscal responsibility over that period.
We have about $6 million, but we use some federal fund dollars to even remove that between the 30 million range, it's about 15% again on that.
Yeah, so I think total expenditure expenditures for fiscal year 24 was 4.2 million. So yeah, if you drop that out of there, that would certainly get you close to that 15%. Yeah.
So just move that around and maybe create a couple of sure.
And with those, with those COVID dollars, you know, those are reimbursed rate-based. So there's, you know, you do get the revenue to offset the expenditure, but certainly there's additional opportunities that you can provide with having, you know, the $29 million at your disposal over that for your term.
If you just have like two, you know, in terms of looking at the percentages in the amount of dollars, but when it comes down to it, the money that we have in the fund balance represents about 10 weeks of operating expenses. So if the state, for whatever reason, whatever related to budget or whatever, there's no money coming to the districts, this is, this is a pigment, right? This is where we brought the money out of.
Yep.
And so it's really, we're at about 10 weeks of operating expenses. If for some reason we're not receiving money from the state.
Yep.
Which I'm sure is happening.
Well, we can order that, that doesn't run, those, you know, those contributions paid, correct? That number really receives, there's a, as I would have more quality to the state than our time. So for that short term.
Yeah, that metric was looked at very closely too, you know, during, right, directly during the pandemic, there were a lot of discussion around various significant cuts to that pupil foundation allowance. So that metric became especially important at that time. And then, you know, just to mention that from a statewide average for fiscal year 2023, that was about 11 weeks of operational, it's the statewide average. So again, just kind of, just under that, that amount.
Correct.
So that was, that was it from the PowerPoint. Just want to thank Dan and Aral and the whole business office for all their professionalism, all their help and cooperation and working with the auditors here. We, I always, I always say that they have their day jobs, their day-to-day jobs. We, I always, I always say that they have their day jobs, their day-to-day jobs, and then they have to deal with us from an audit perspective and all our requests and questions. So I really, really appreciate all that.
At the meeting last week, we probably mentioned that this year, the usual motion audit standard, you just addressed that we agree and how we care with the motion standard
Yep, yep. So there's a new audit new standard this year, so nothing that impacted your financial statements or financial results. It was really more of a requirement on our end where we just had to gain a deeper understanding of districts' internal controls, what the IT environment looks like, how that impacts the numbers. And that impacted both the, you know, the basic financial statement as well as the single audit. And the single audit, I think, is where it was probably even more impactful. So as a result of that, we did see some, some more, you know, we found, we had more findings from a single audit perspective, we had more deficiencies in internal controls, generally speaking, that we saw across our audits. So here again, no findings, no question costs, no deficiencies in internal control to report. So even with that kind of enhanced scope, similar results to what we've seen historically.
So we mentioned we're finding in other districts.
Yes, yeah, yeah, correct, correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Findings in other districts as, yes, yes, not here, yep.
And then, if you could go back to either first slide that prints down where our money comes from, because we did, our community did just pass a knowledge, operating multiple homeless. So I just, what part of that, you know, 44 million, if you know the number or about of that 44 million, you know, is attributed to the, to the village of Home Brothers that was just passed. And I just want to add to say that for our community, I want to thank them for passing, for passing that in, I guess, at this point, or, and so, and just so they can see that it is a significant portion, significant portion of the overall.
Yep. Yeah, so on this slide here, it said, your property tax revenue is at $40.6 million, so about 21% of total revenue sources. Yep, is, that's, is from, from those villages.
That was the one that was being used 30 ago.
I have a question, so I just want to say, thanking Dan, because knowing our business office turned over this year, like, I think that to be able to do all of that, kudos to that team. And just as we think about funding, kudos to Richard Ralph for going out and helping legislators know that our teachers are what matters most, so our head court put us here, which I think is, is missed in human numbers that we advocated for our
Yeah, we can really thank Aral, he's sitting in the back there. He did everybody, front row seat here, so. Aral was back there.
I wonder why you're here tonight, is he not?
He led them to the front, yeah. Yeah, this was his night job for pretty much all of summer, so a lot of credit goes to him for coming into a new district in the midst of an audit, trying to go through all of these historic levels of grants. It's a true challenge, but he got his way through it with ease, and lucky to have him here. So, so for your consideration tonight is just formally accept this financial audit report.
If we ask to accept the 2023, 2024, may I have a solution, please? If therefore resolved, then the work of education is not approved, the first is a positive, please be ordered on each occasion, have provided our work. If you want to have, if you want to answer, yes. If you have, if you have, is there a box of orders? Are there any questions, Tom, please? See if that's all, if we say yes.
Yes.
I got five more to go. So next, so next up for consideration is replacement of that Hill, Leonard, and Troy Union Elementary. So we're looking to replace through our food service fund, using some of the excess fund balance that we had, the purchase of others across the district, but these three elementary schools are next in line. So for your review, we did have pricing reviewed and obtained by Dale Moran. Our food service liaison has recommended to award this bid to Stafford and Smith in the amount of $118,233.
If we ask to purchase replacement, I would like to approve that for association.
If it were resolved when the purchase is completed, you know, I would be worried if Smith and he have, we have, we have, and this is how we do this, and we turn the features. I've got it, so just, very good. The, so the food service fund is one of those where we had access money where we have to acquire five lots.
Spend it down here, yep.
And any other questions? See if that's all, if it's okay, please say yes.
So next for consideration is the New Smith Middle School. We did previously bid out pretty much all of the categories for construction, with landscaping being one that we pulled out of the last approval, just for a little bit more review. And so after some further discussions, we did bring this one back to you tonight for your approval. So we did obtain competitive bids on this landscaping work. This is primarily the site work, there's not a lot of actual involvement, there's no irrigation, you know, it's just really just basic plantings, benches, the seed, soil, some of the excavation work. So we did want to award this one with your approval to Heritage and Company in the amount of
If you ask to purchase a basic CD, so also have certain things.
If it were resolved, then the bid for landscaping work at the New Smith Middle School be awarded to Heritage and Company in the amount of $1,239,877, and that this amount be proved as an expenditure of the capital projects fund.
This is a challenge supported by Mr. Paul. Any other questions or comments about this? See if that's all, if it's okay, please say yes.
Yes.
If we say no.
So next for your consideration is a 2025 roof replacement project. So the district has a roof replacement schedule essentially that we follow every year, so we try to chip away at it building by building. We don't do entire roofs at the same time, we do sections of roofs. So typically, you will see small sections of each roof replaced in tandem with other buildings, just to spread some of that work out. So our operations department did receive bids and reviewed them with WeatherTech Consulting Group, who handles all of our roofing within the district. So tonight, we do have replacements for Baker Middle School, Troy Union Elementary, and this building here. So the recommendation is to approve in the amount of $1,296,458.
If it were resolved, then the bid for roof replacement be awarded as follows, and that this amount be proved as an expenditure of the capital projects fund. Division 7 avoided the services building at $88,922, rolling roofing to Baker and Troy Union at the amount of $1,145,800, with a contingency of 5% for that $61,736 to the total amount of $1,296,458.
I want to say it's near the back of the building, so there's different sections that WeatherTech has identified on each building. No, yeah, it's a portion section of the building that we've identified. So, you know, this building might have eight to 10 sections, a high school might have 30 sections. Yep. Yes. Yeah, it was just one roof company. Oh, yeah, yeah, in this case, Division 7 is the roofing company that's doing this building. Yeah. Well, there are, there are different divisions of a building too, so, yep. Yep. So Royal is doing Baker and Troy Union. They're a little bit newer to the district, but we've vetted them out with other districts, and they seem very reliable, so. So next is consideration for some technology infrastructure upgrades. As we discussed at the last workshop, we did have server failures and we've some printing and phone issues. The district unfortunately had to rebuild those servers from scratch. Our backup solution isn't as easy to pull some of those backups from. So this is kind of a two-part upgrade, one being new servers, and then the virtualization of those servers. So the ease of use that the district has in accessing those servers will be streamlined through a company called Scale Technologies. And then the secondary part of that is the backup software itself. So there's a small software component to this purchase, and that is Beam is the brand for the software. So we're trying to upgrade these servers, but then also have better redundancy. So in a case where we do have a server failure, we do have the quicker capability to restore those servers and get things up and running much quicker than we did over the last couple of months. So the award recommended tonight is to People Driven Technology in the amount of $443,866.88. And then this will be mostly funded by the 2023 Capital Project, and then the software component by the general fund.
If we ask to purchase new servers and backup software, be awarded to People Driven Technology in the amount of $4,866,887. And if this amount be approved as an expenditure of the Apple Project, on day of general.
Just a quick comment about the server failures, it wasn't any cash in DHL, it's just the print server that failed, right?
Yeah, so the print server, so there's various servers, we have 100 different servers on these hard drives essentially, and then you have a software to access those servers. So the servers that failed had our printing servers, and then it also had some phone setup, so we had to rebuild the phone server. But the print server in particular, the issue was, rather than just simply restoring it, they had to go through and build it one by one, which takes time. During that process, there's a default setting in some of the software that would project out the printers to all the computers, and in this case, the MacBooks across the district, which we are majority users of MacBooks here in Troy schools. And so what happened was is it just sent a flood of printers to every computer, so much that the Mac just shut off the network connection. And so what we thought was just the internet going down, they had to escalate this all the way up through Dr. Macheski's contact at Apple to get tier-three engineers onsite at Barnard Elementary and actually start reading logs as to what is going on here, why is the network shut off specifically on a MacBook. iPad still worked, PC laptop still worked, it was just related to MacBooks. So they eventually isolated the issue to the paper cut software that we have, and a setting that was enabled by default to where when they restored the server, reinstalled the software, that was turned on, which was turned off previously. So, so it wreaked havoc across the district on those computers, but we were fortunate to get the proper support, and their ongoing support too, Apple's leaving that ticket open for us for a period of time as well, so.
Now, if you were shopping, that backup server, backup server is actually controlled by?
Yep. So, so we are going to utilize our current backup solution still to have some redundancy, but the new Beam software will have backups at Troy High, but also backups in the cloud. So something we did not have previously was cloud backups. So this will allow for that, and then we would then have multiple levels of redundancy.
Mike, I have one question, this is, we're talking about this purchase, we need to call it failure, did we move this purchase up to a level of plan five, or was this already fully planned, this is?
There were bond dollars allocated for these purchases, I think this definitely escalated the priority of this purchase. So right now, they're looking to potentially install the new servers over Thanksgiving, even over the Christmas break. So for now, though, the server has been rebuilt, it's functioning, the settings are all properly tweaked. So now that that's up and running, they can focus on replacing it to ensure that we just don't have these.
And we didn't have this problem with, you know, this year.
Yeah, I would say this probably would have been a, yes.
We had a problem with that, because now we need to purchase out, you know, two years.
Yeah, this, tentatively was probably a summertime project coming up, so, yeah, there's additional server upgrades to follow, but specifically, we wanted to do these ones now in the immediate future, so, yep. So the next one is for the purchase of two electric buses, and this would be funded, yep, this would be funded by the Section 74B grant through the state of Michigan. So this was actually one of Aral's first things that he did when he came to Troy, was work with Hoekstra and finalize this grant and all of the requirements to get it submitted to the state. So through all of that work, we did finalize this purchase with Hoekstra. They were the low bidder amongst the three bids that we got. And then the district general fund cost will be around $80,000. And that will be primarily related to the cost of the chargers and installation of those chargers. So, and then from that, we do have a consultant that we're working with to apply for some IRS tax credits on those as well. So we're hoping to get some money back out of that 80 grand through DTE and then through the IRS as well.
If we ask to purchase two regular buses for Troy, are they available in our school?
If it were resolved, then the two electric buses, you would, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be, and then this cannot be a new expenditure of the 74,000 bus.
So I have a conclusion, my best, I'll leave it simple, if I can make, so are there questions or comments?
So you mentioned that in addition to the, you have $80,000 in district general fund, what is the just ballpark number of cost of just two regular super buses?
So a 77-passenger diesel bus is in 140, 150 range, so. Yep, that's a fair number, yep. Yeah, these are significantly more right now, hence the grant dollars to cover it. We do have $823,000 of grant funding through this grant, so there will be a small allocation left. We'll certainly see if we're allowed to use that or not towards the cost of the charging, but we would.
They assume, you know, the actual cost of that, that's about $4,000, $4,000.
Yes.
Versus 140,000.
Yep, prior to any rebates or credits.
And the purchase here, the 850,000, that's probably fine, we own buses, it's, we actually, I mean, it's.
We went on, yes, yep.
Good question, if we've done EPA, do we allow them for that, I think, is that part of the, or is that still available?
Yeah, my understanding of this grant is you have to apply for that EPA grant and get that funding, and then they kind of send it to the state, and then the state sends us the total, so.
So we use partially the EPA grant, and then the rest is state, we would have made up that.
Yep.
So this is essentially, I mean, it's pretty high for us to.
More or less, yeah.
Who puts some buses in your service and see how they do before?
Yeah, like Pontiac Schools has almost 45 of them right now, so they, they want all in on all their buses, but for us, we want to make sure that it functions for what we need, based on the route lengths and times, and you got to factor in cold weather and all of that infrastructure, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yep. Yeah, once, we have different vendors for that as well, yes. Do we have a question over here? So currently our transportation director does have a couple of drivers that are a little more in tune with the, the electric market. So she did want to start with them first to get them driving these buses and kind of work out the kinks. And then from there, I think we would have to look at what is an appropriate use for this electric bus based on mile range, that kind of thing. So we may start small, you know, in between runs during mid-days, that kind of thing. And then if it works out from there, we can then, you know, pave out further. Cheat, of course, yeah. Um, those ones are a little bit more readily available than the, like, if you ordered a new gas bus or diesel bus right now, it's going to take a year to get these. I, I don't know the exact timeline, but I know it's not that long. It may be a few months. Really, the biggest delay might be just waiting on the install of the charger and everything, so. We'll, we'll tell Hoekstra we need it by the next month.
Okay, so next we have, I'll keep engaging on that as I kind of account, but we're in a lot of two minutes for each speaker. And I guess after Hoekstra, you want to continue it before you want to, yeah, we'll, we'll take a couple of breaks and then we'll.
Rich said he would give me one. Camp Brown in something. So that makes sense, yeah.
We have plenty of speakers, so as I said, we're going to do two minutes for each speaker. This lady is totally able to time her there. Unfortunately, her timer is only a lot of the one, we're two minutes, so she's getting two, one minutes. So don't panic when you see the first one, we'll like to show you another minute as we go through. All of our speakers are on one topic. That's for the first speaker. I'm going to have bingo and then I want to, I want back to the test speaker. I want to give back to the test speaker a chance to give everybody overview of the topic that everybody wants to talk about. If after you hear this update, you don't feel the need to speak, you know, when I call you, say, okay, I'm good, close to moving on. But I want to make sure we give you a whole update before we start. Mr. Joseph Colby, you are our first speaker.
My name is Justin Colby Burn. Everybody know I am a consultant of the state of Oregon State of Texas. Additionally, I provide mathematics tutoring up to and including multilateral calculus and platforming your models. I have lived in Troy since two thousand nineteen. My wife and her six siblings are graduates of the Troy School District. My older sister is a TFC graduate and several of my cousins are graduates of TFC. Currently, my immediate family has six children in the Troy School District. I decided to speak today because I wanted to thank President Schmidt, Trustee Wilson, and Secretary Hoff for all of their hard work and dedication and service to our community. During your leadership, we have seen expansion of AP classes, protections for vulnerable students, and an expansion of mental health services available to students and much, much more. I have provided tutoring to dozens of Troy students and graduates since I began tutoring in two thousand twenty-two. I have always been in awe of how strong the mathematical and scientific aptitude of TFC students and graduates have been. This is something that this board should be proud of. The hard work and expansive knowledge base that these graduates show shows me the dedicated dedication that each of you and the Troy Education Association has to the TFC community. Thank you for your service and enduring, ah, and enduring dedication to our community.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. We, uh, certainly, like, we are, we regularly, as a school district, monitor our attendance areas, our enrollment patterns across the school district. Those are monitored annually by Mrs. Steve Bottom, Mrs. Greif, or myself, Mr. Trudell. We're constantly looking at those. Over the course of the last couple of years, we've seen some increasing disparities occurring in, in middle school enrollments. Specifically, we have two middle schools that have over eight hundred students. We have two middle schools that are at six hundred students. And we saw those, the enrollment patterns and those trajectories continuing. With New Smith Middle School coming online in fall of twenty-six, we thought this was a great opportunity to bring a group of individuals together to begin to study potential options around two goals. The first goal was balancing if possible our middle school enrollments. Secondly, looking at addressing what we call splits across the district. So splits would be a scenario where a student might come in with their, with their classmates and they might split to a different middle school. And in some cases, we have students that split to a different middle school and then split again to a different high school. And where those splits occur, we thought this might be an opportunity to be those involved, try to eliminate or at least reduce those numbers that occur across the Troy School District. So with that, we did an all call for applications. We had a number of applicants expressing interest to be part of the committee. We selected approximately twenty-four individuals. Those are individuals from across residents, Troy School District residents, from across the city. So representing all areas of the school district as well as, we have a number of principals on, on that committee who have a background in, and experience obviously in, in the feeder patterns that are associated with their particular schools. We brought the, the committee, the goal was to bring the committee together at five times. We started meeting in October. We started with providing data to this group. So the data that this group looked at is they looked at, they were familiarized with the, had an opportunity to familiarize themselves with the district map, including our elementary, middle, and high school attendance areas. We had them look at our enrollment patterns across the district over the course of the last several years and projections moving forward. And then we brought them also to, or we had them also look at the current, what we call feeder patterns. So where, where youngsters, depending upon where they, they live within the city, go to elementary, particularly at the middle, and then ultimately to high school, all of some other data. So that committee has met now three times. Again, the intention is for that committee to meet upwards of five times. They met three times. They have met thus far three times. The last meeting, amongst additional data that was provided, they had an opportunity to see one potential option for solutions to the goal that were provided them. If the intention at the next meeting, at the fourth meeting, which is next Monday, they, they will see three, if not four, additional options. So again, one option was provided at the, at the third meeting. And I think there was an impression that that option was going to be the final option. It is no way intended for it to be the final option. It will be one of multiple options that will be reviewed by the attendance area review committee. Really important to recognize that no decisions have been made. The goal again, after the fifth meeting, next step would be this group finalizing recommending, or not recommendations, excuse me, options to administration. Administration would take those options, let's say there are three to four, potentially five options. Administration would take those options. We would put, we will put those together in a report. Though that report will be provided to the Board of Education probably in January, that's the timeframe number we're working with right now. Will be provided to the Board in January for the Board's review at that time. The Board would make a decision. They either prefer not to move forward with any of the options or they would suggest that administration move forward and get additional feedback from the community. That feedback would be in the form of administration setting meetings across the district, likely at middle schools, at each of the four middle schools. Or we would invite the community to come together. We would share the options that have been provided, the, the, the pluses and the minuses of each, how each impacts the community and so forth. And then after that, we would gather additional input from the community that are at those meetings. We would gather those meetings. We would gather the input from those meetings and summarize all that. I'd synthesize all that information and then bring that back to the Board for a kind of a final look at all of the information that's been gathered. So by the time the Board would look at all of the final information, it would include options that have been provided by our community and put through the attendance area review committee. It would provide, it would be provided with, that, that was supported with the data that was provided. And then also the, the information input that would be provided by the community through those community meetings. At that point, and only at that point, would the Board make a, would make a final decision on any attendance area adjustments. It's also important to, to remember that as part of the goals, there, there will be no high school impact. The AARC, the Attendance Area Review Committee, was told that they could not look at any adjustments that would impact high school attendance areas. So if you're on the east side of Ottest Road, you would remain at Troy High. Or Athens, west side, you would go to Troy High. And of course, IA is still an option for students as a choice across the Troy School District. Also important, one other really important thing to, to keep in mind is the, the, if the, we would not implement any recommendation from the Board until fall of twenty-six. We, we purposely gave ourselves about eighteen months to work through this process because we wanted to make sure that the process was clear, it was transparent, it provided for community input, and that the Board had ample opportunity to make a decision based upon the information that would be brought back to, to the group. So let me introduce you the why behind it, as well as the process, where we are right now. We're in the, we are just initially three of five. The fourth will be next Monday. The goal will be to bring that information to the Board in January, community meetings to follow, should that be decided, it's necessary. And then a, a kind of a report probably to the community sometime likely early spring of, of twenty-five. So that's, that's where we are right now for the community, for those that are here today, as well as those that will be reviewing the Board meeting earlier.
Okay, so again, I'll call your name if you come forward with two minutes. And if you could address the Board, that would be great. The Board won't be responding to you because the goal is to be able to capture anything. So if we're, we're having a meeting in public, it's not dialogue, this is what we will capture. If anybody feels they need to be contacted later, we can do that later, okay? And again, I call your name, I'm like, okay, I think it's kind of covering what I want to say, then that's fine. So my first person that I have and my second here is Mr. Stevens, is Carley, Carla.
Yep. Good evening, thanks for your time. I'm Mr. Pratt, live in Troy, Michigan. We moved here from Berkeley. Over seven years ago, my wife and I did start a family, we have two girls now that are enrolled in elementary. One of the main reasons why we moved the area was obviously the, the community itself and the education that's going to be able to, to provide our bodies. And so a very strong reason for that would be the opportunity to attend bowling. And so what's come to light, I think, through a, the torture, through a PTA meeting that we've learned, is this study is now underway. And I think that the communication to date, and I heard we just appreciate the facts thus far, but I think we need to have much more transparency. And I appreciate the timeline that we're looking at, the eighteen months, but I think we need to look at within the next three months what the impact of the community is going to be. So obviously, it's a very diverse community. There's a lot of people on the streets. And I think how the community's found out to date, the release, this circle has been a PTA meeting, was now a corporate cavity. It should have been disclosed, I think, in a more public forum, such as a Board meeting session. Also, there was a community newsletter that came out recently, a very brainy map presented, put at the top. Again, just in the fashion of communication, it's not as straightforward as it should be for such a, um, matter to impact so many people. The other thing I want to comment on is going to be the taxable values for the home. We look at what percentages goes to the direct revenue for the, the Board here and for the futures. And so when we take a look at home values, it could be impacted by this. I think there could be impacts in the fact that obviously it's going to affect some positively and some negatively. And that's going to have a lot of, a lot of things that people need to consider. So we take a look at how that's going to play out through iteration of just not my children, but the children who come afterwards. I think we need to have a larger community involvement and appreciate the transparency today, but I think we need to have more so going forward. I heard twenty-four participants, I think, from March, a number of people who reflect all the diverse areas within the city of Troy to be.
Dr. Al Burani, Terrell.
Hello, we're beginning our, um, first and foremost, my primary concern is the real being and the success of. First and foremost, my primary concern is the well-being and the success of our children. And I believe that foremost consideration of any of these committees that has to do is to involve the socioeconomic well-being of our kids. So my question to the committee is, have we really found out what's, why would there be increase in attendance in other schools compared to other schools? So with this being, I tried to pull out some information from MI School Data dot org. And it's, I compared basically Boland Park Middle School and Smith Middle School. And looking at the NSET from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, this, there is a percent increase, remarkable increase, like ten percent of total advanced students in Boland compared to school, compared to Smith Middle School. And I also looked at the TSEP, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty eight. There's a twenty percent gap in the advanced math in Boland compared to Smith Middle School. So have we really found out the reason why there's an increase in enrollment in Boland? And hopefully, this reason has to be tackled because otherwise, we won't be able to have a long-term solution without really knowing why people are moving to Boland and not Smith. So I would like the committee to be more transparent on giving us the solution. Why is this so? Because either way, people will relocate if we do not address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate the review, Dr. Marquezky, that he gave us, that answered a lot of questions. I and my family are Troy residents, we've been here about ten years. Prior to moving here, we had various neighborhoods and options to choose from. We chose Troy, we, other considerations were Rochester, Bloomfield. One of the reasons we chose Troy, one of the stronger reasons, which was of course the, the school district, not only that, I like sidewalks too, my neighborhood has sidewalks, which I love. But, but the school was one of the major reasons. So recently, I became aware of this AARC committee, and I was told that there was a potential reassignment of middle school. And I said, that couldn't be, right? I, I thought it was a joke. I hadn't heard from it, I didn't, I read the paper often, I didn't see any public announcements in the paper of this, so I just wanted to come, express my, not concerns, but feelings regarding this. I have three children in the Troy School District. My oldest daughter goes to Boland, she is doing wonderfully. As many of you know and have heard, it's an amazing school. She's had theater there. She has a social studies teacher named Mr. David Holmes, who is very famous, has been there for thirty plus years. She just came back from the DC trip. So I see her flourishing and growing. She's also a member of the stock club, market, club, excuse me. So there's a lot of benefit that I see every day, and I love her growth, and I want my other two children to have this. This is not, this is not slight on Smith. I have friends and I have neighbors that go to Smith. But if the Board is going to continue with this, I would want some equality between the two schools. Okay? My other kids go to Hamilton, I was so proud today of Hamilton School. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is Rachel Fleishen.
Hi. My name is Rachel Fleishen, and I would like to address the Board tonight to voice my concerns regarding the potential reassignment of Hamilton Elementary School to Smith Middle School. My husband and I have three children who would be affected by this change. We spent three years housing in a very competitive market, deliberately purchasing a home that was assigned to Hamilton Elementary School, Boland Middle School, and Troy High School. We were previously living in another area of Troy, but moved this past spring so that our children could attend specific schools known for their superior metrics. As mentioned earlier during the presentation given by the Student Achievement Data Review, it's important that our children are ready to take AP and other advanced classes starting in ninth grade and spanning all four years of high school. This was emphasized as being important to colleges. Opportunities across the district do not seem equal if classes at Boland are not provided on, classes at Boland are not provided on campus at Smith. Boland has in-house geometry and algebra two classes where Smith students who want these classes need to take a bus to Troy High. My children have an interest in the arts, and many parents discuss that Boland Theater Program is stronger than Smith's. All these factors were key in our family's decision to move. There can be a variety of other solutions, which I would encourage the attendance committee to explore. Our neighborhood already has a significant number of students that attend private schools. As an earlier presentation stated, revenue we receive from our schools is also based on enrollment. If we're redistricted to Smith, I think the number of private school attendees will increase, which would likely impact the intent of the committee's plan. We all want what's best for our children, and I think that as parents, we deserve the chance to be part of this decision-making process. We all want Troy to remain a well-respected, high-performing private school.
Thank you. You here?
Hello, good evening. My name is Yojan Lu. Our family moved to this area in twenty thirteen. So with two kids graduating years in two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty six. My family was sad, was sad when we heard the resuming news because to live in the Hamilton, Boland, and Troy High district was our first choice in twenty thirteen when we moved in, even sacrificing the bigger or newer houses in the other zone. So we never regret in living in this community, and even with paying the higher house price and the higher tax rate. And our both kids enjoyed this area, even the Boland Park, very much with the multiple unique clubs, and also the in-house convenient high school classes. So there are some of the question I would like you can consider and take. What are the solid action plans to build the new Smith that is going to equivalent to Boland Park? And how to share the teachers' resources? And the second, for the impacted family in the Bires zone, could you consider to give the option, the either or options, and that let the family can choose the preferred middle school? Third, do you have any opportunity to expand the Boland Park Middle School and to accommodate more enrollments? And we look forward to the TSD sub-branding school and growing in the best extent. And the other thing, the last, from the declining enrollment in the other school district, and how to attain the school enrollment rate and attend the new enrollments, attracting the new enrollments might be another consideration. Thank you.
Su, CD. It's all right, it's all right. Dr. Marquezky, appreciate the update. Just to let everybody know, I first heard the rumor about the Hamilton students being reassigned to Smith from, from other parents who attended a Smith PTO meeting. Then I went to the Hamilton PTO meeting, and then we saw the official email come out last Friday. Just to give you a background about myself, I actually grew up in Troy. I went to Martell Smith and Troy High myself. When my wife and I were looking for a home to settle down with our three kids, Troy, you know, my experience in Troy basically made us decide this is the place to be. We were assigned, our house is assigned to Hamilton, Boland, and Troy High. We, I really think that is the best place for our kids to be. Given Troy's reputation, the schools are well-known, very well-respected, but the reality is there's tiers within the schools. We chose Boland specifically, and a lot of people deliberately choose their home in Troy based on the schools that they're assigned to. So based on the rumor of the Hamilton students all being assigned to Smith, I do want to ask some questions of why, when seventy percent of the students of Hamilton are attending Boland today, why the choice is to take that seventy percent and move it to Smith versus a thirty and bringing it to Boland? I'm aware that there are students who don't attend Bemis, Schroder, or Hamilton that are assigned to Boland Middle School. So my question would be, why aren't those students assigned to the middle schools that track to the elementary school they're attending? The last thing is, I'm open to proposals of reassigning the schools of, but I would like opportunities for existing Troy families to be grandfathered into the choices that they made when they purchased their home. I'm also open to addressing the inequalities that currently exist across our schools. There's known differences across the schools. I know somebody else already mentioned it, Smith, Smith versus Boland. Smith does not have furniture geometry in-house versus Boland. I guess my final statement is, I think the district should focus on addressing those inequities that exist between the schools, therefore attempting to use our students to resolve them.
Thank you.
Good evening, respected Board members and district administrators. My name's Jen, and I am a resident of Chelsea Village. I have lived in my home for over eleven years. Like many of my neighbors, we choose to live there because of the excellent school of our area. More specifically, Hamilton Elementary School, Boland Park Middle School, and Troy High School. I'm here to express my objection to the proposed redistricting plan to move my subdivision from Boland Park Middle School to Smith Middle School. Over a decade ago, we searched many homes in Troy. Some, and some were on the market, were better conditions or lower prices. But we, they were outside of the Boland Park attendance area. We ended up buying our current home because even though it was not the lowest price or it's not the best condition, why? Because we all prioritize the Boland Park as, you know, they're excellent in education and academics. So in the latest US news, Boland Park ranks number eight in Michigan, and the Smiths rank number forty three. And seventy-eight percent of students are proficient in math, and eighty percent have been reading for Boland Park. And this, and this number of sixty-three percent and seventy-one percent versus Smiths respectively. The difference of the overall ranking and academic performance are significant. A study showed that within the suburban neighborhood, a five percent improvement in test score can raise the home value by two point five percent. So we all paid more for better school academic performance. This situation wasn't just unique for us. Many families in our area share similar value, and we make similar decisions. This proposed redistricting plan is rather to disrupt these carefully made decisions, plus it would depreciate our home value and cause negative consequential financial impact to our communities. I hope I'm more communication, thank you for your time. I hope the, you know, the school district consider, hear our, hear our voice, and then have more plan. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board and staff, and fellow parents. First, I'd like to say congratulations, Dr. Raker. Thank you so much for the great achievement for our Hamilton community. Thank you for your contribution and the dedication for our kids. And so I'm a Hamilton Elementary School parent, and I have been living here for more than ten years. And I'm a mom of three kids, fifth grade, first grade, greater in, my younger son is going to pre-K. I'm here tonight to share the same opinions about the redistricting council for their Hamilton and Boland. So we also purchased, like many parents would also purchase a house because of the high reputation of Hamilton, Boland, and Troy High. And right now, we feel deeply worried about the potential redistricting and the impact of the quality of education, and also our property value, which could affect the future of our entire community. Thank you, Dr. Marquezky. You just mentioned about the transparency, and also you would like to communicate with us, our parents, to get fully participated in. You would give us enough time to participate in all the processes and talk about the details. And so if the redistrict is going to move forward, we need to get clear and detailed information. And so we want to know what's, what's this change happening? What's going to happen to teacher assignments and the curriculum? And how we as a new facility, like the classroom, ensure the safety standards? Because for the new buildings, there would be a lot of mechanical, it will be toxic for the children, so we need to consider about that as well. And also for the tax rate, if, if the tax rates were going down, so the residents get the compensation, and we should have more open choice. Thank you very much for your patience, yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to express my concerns of a proposed plan to resolve Hamilton graduates to Smith Middle School instead of Boland Park Middle School. First, let's consider about the impact of our choosing of a daily commute. The travel time to Boland Park Middle School is about five minutes. And the Smith Middle School takes twelve minutes. And also, we need to add the traffic lights and traffic congestion, and the commute often stretches to twenty minutes or more. Factoring in multiple stops, and then the entire commute will be forty minutes one way. This change makes the additional twenty minutes per student a day. And one hundred eighty hours are necessary travel per students in total. And also nine thousand hours for fifty students over three years. The extended commute also leads to increased fatigue, and also less quality time for parents and family and for studies, and the loss of productivity. Additionally, it involves more like gas use and vehicle wear and tear, driver labor expenses, those all come from taxpayers' money. And also more risk of safety for our children. Secondly, let's consider about academic spending. Boland Park Middle School is ranking, is ranked eighth in Michigan by US News. And Smith Middle School is ranked forty-third. Lastly, many families, just including us, have made a significant financial investments in our home based on the established education pathway from Hamilton to Boland Park Middle School. I'm going to be, I'll be very quick, resuming will evaluate our property investment. So please consider about all the facts that we suggest. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk today. Actually, me and my family moved to this country two years ago for better education for our kids. And then we chose very carefully our neighborhood to be attending in Hamilton and Boland as we have also another experience in the elementary school in Troy also, the district, where we find that Hamilton way better. And they give us, thank you for Dr. Rockard and all the staff, a very good, like careful for our kids and helping us to be integrated more in the community. And also, I have three kids, actually twins, is attending in the fifth grade, and one in fourth grade. As I understand now that it will apply by two thousand twenty-six. So is it that mean that two of my kids will attending in Boland? And then the other kid will attend in Smith? I think it's not fair for my kids to have like a different like educational level. Even my Even my small kid now is telling that twins that it's not fair for me to have less education value. And even our kids know that Bowlin in the ranking is better way by Smith. So please consider that as we paid a lot for this condo, actually, that they are very new to this country, even to afford like a house in Troy and this tax, just because we want our kids to be well-educated and to have a better future than us in our country, which is Syria. We have a lot of war and you know our situation. So please consider that because I cannot send someone to school and the others to school and this is not convenient for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for, yeah. So thank you for the opportunity. I guess I don't want to repeat all the points that, you know, other people made, you know. And the only thing I want to say is, you know, we need to consider like, you know, the students' opinion, you know, their feelings. Basically, we're talking about, you know, how the parents feel, right? You know, have we asked our students where do they want to be, right? So I think that's my point, you know, and also along with other great parents' points. I moved here in eighteen because of the same reason, like others. So, thank you.
Brian, you pronounced it right. You got it right. My name is Brian Brown. I'm a resident of Troy. My children go to Hamilton. I have a third grader and a fourth grader at Hamilton and a seventh grader at Bowlin Park. I don't want to spend too much time repeating what other people have said today, but I do think what is important that has resonated with me is a lot of people have an expectation interest when they invest in their home. It's the biggest investment that many of us will make in our lives and especially to move into Troy to this school district. And I ask you to consider that expectation interest and the massive investment that people have made to move into this specific school district. I want to share a couple of positive things at Bowlin. Other people have spoken about the very positive, excellent educational outcomes and the, I think the scores and the ratings bear that out. But I also think a school is much more than just its ratings. It's a very strong school community, as I've learned with my daughter in seventh grade and my younger kids already looking forward to attending that school. And to, I know eighteen months seems like a long time, but it is a very short period of time for those kids who are expecting to go to Bowlin and are now changing. And that's seventy percent of the school, as someone else pointed out. I also wanted to address splits. When I moved here, I thought it was a very strange thing that the schools are going to be splitting like, split like this. But I found it to be a very, very positive thing as my kids get to know friends from other schools and then their friends from elementary school go to the other school and then mix. And so I think it broadens the experience of the community and is actually a very beneficial thing to have those splits in a counterintuitive way. So, thank you. I also say if you do make this change, I ask that it be phased in over time, longer than eighteen months, and that you consider adding additional resources to Smith to help bring them up to the excellent standards that Bowlin has set, whether that be extra faculty or extra staff to supplement what they have right now. It is strange to me that they both have seventeen to one school ratio, but there's this imbalance. So thank you all for your consideration and thank you to a lot of the parents for speaking.
Good evening, members of the board, staff, students, and families. Thank you for the opportunity to share some recent updates on that and so forth. First, our fall theater production, Shrek, the musical, opened on November fifteenth and has had five successful performances so far. Today, we held a successful student matinee and tomorrow, we will welcome students from local elementary schools to come watch the show. We have upcoming performances this weekend on Friday, November twenty-second at eight p.m., Saturday, November twenty-third at eight p.m., and Sunday, November twenty-fourth at three p.m. And I encourage you to see it if you have not already. In athletics, our fall sports season finished up with some accomplishments such as our girls volleyball team became an OOK white champion in the DAS to the district finals. We also had two state qualifiers in cross-country. As we shift towards the sports, tryouts have taken place over the last two weeks. Additionally, our science Olympiad team opened their season as co-hosts of a tournament at Celine High School while our host team competed at regionals at Troy High on November sixteen, where fifty-five students qualified for the state competition. On the community front, our student council has started the process of selecting a charity for our upcoming charity with three finalists set to present their cases. Finally, the National Honor Society application window is now open and we are looking to induct new members in January. And that concludes all of these updates from Athens High School. Thank you.
So a few things are going on at TCC this month. We're doing some fundraising for Operation Blue Slay and Deep deposit. Operation Blue Slay is basically to the Troy community, to give back to Troy community. Hopefully we don't ruin any Christmases because we are happy and present in the bars. And it goes back to last year, we might have ruined two families, but that's all this year. And Deep deposit is just to support teen hygiene going forward for kids that may not have access to it. Some things going on are bookshop classes, school shop renovations, where we're making it a little bit more inviting and more kind of a more cafe vibe for people to have. And just today, we finished going on Home Depot field trip that we got to kind of learn what the point is and what the maybe going structure, why you might be going there, why you might be buying and different ways to navigate. And third, just some random things, bookmobile. The Troy Pub Library has created a bookmobile that is sold around from, started at our school, I believe, quite a bit, I don't know. Friday, so in Troy High in Athens, I could be walking around, that's what they told me. So that's cool. He's a Brett Tal, he gave a library card, Brett Tal a book and they'll come buy next month to pick it up. And if you don't, they have a couple, the book we call a free book, not free, they're renting it, but if you don't have a library card, you still get a few books. And third, we're having our Thanksgiving feast again this year, so that's just, oh, and also Morgan still goes to our school. Now I wouldn't ask to be thrown in, but yeah, that's everything.
So did you go out into bookmobile? Because I saw that it was really, how many books are there? How big is this thing?
It's like an electrician's van. Old books, it's like everything. They even have like video games you can rent, it's a pretty wide selection. It's very cool.
So you were laughing about Home Depot, was it worth while?
It was worth while, yes, we did. You still heard a lot about Home Depot, why it may be beneficial to in your future, you know, where you're shopping, what you're shopping for, little intricacies and how to tell where you're going.
Is that just your plus that did that?
Oh, yeah. No, he was a sales man at that place. Yeah, I was like, I could buy everything right now.
That's cool. Okay, great.
Buy and fill, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, Daria, you want to take us through I A E?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all having a terrific Tuesday. It has been a fantastic month at I A E's with big events and club activities. At the beginning of the month, our Indian American Student Association hosted its annual Diwali dinner to celebrate the Hindu Festival of Lights. There were multiple lit dance performance acts followed by a dazzling delicious dinner. Last Wednesday, Peacock hosted its first event for the new I A E's Mentor Men T program. All freshmen and their upperclassmen mentors played a exciting themed version of The Price is Right, making wild guesses together and realizing that no one had ever purchased a turkey really strengthened relationships and friendships in mentor men T groups. In terms of other extracurricular happenings, our Model Humor Nation's team had its first conference on November ninth. We took over fifty delegates to the conference to debate the global implications of reimagining data access and students unlocked new skills in the realm of research versus ways of speaking. Last Saturday, our Health Occupations Students of America Chapter, more commonly known as H O S A, took over two hundred aspiring health professionals to our regional leadership conference. Eighty-four of our students placed as one of the top seven competitors in their events to qualify for the state leadership conference. Needless to say, these H O S A members injected some serious steel into their work from heart to finish. Last but certainly not least, after three months of preparation, Drama Club is excited to kick off the opening night of its musical, the twenty-fifth annual Putnam County Spell Bee this Friday. The evening will feature beyond hilarious scenes, so make sure to bring your clipboards and give all of our spellers an A-plus. And before I end, I wanted to let everyone know about the Troy School District Staff versus Students basketball game that will be happening on Wednesday, December fourth at Athens. The game will feature staff members from across the district and students from all four of our high schools. The event will be hosted by the Superintendent Student Advisory Board and will be fundraising for our annual Martin Luther King Junior Day service. We would love for our community members to join us and cheer on our players for a good cause. For more information on the players that will be participating, game details, and a link to purchase tickets in advance, please look out for more information in the district update and the S S A V Instagram. Firstly, I am looking forward to walking the student team win with Dr. Macheski as our captain. And that is all that I have with current news for I A E's and the district. Thank you. The musical, I believe, will be happening at seven p.m., but there will be more information on our school website.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a lot going on at Troy High School and I'm excited to have the opportunity to share with you all. First up, as mentioned at our last meeting, we have a school objective. Our vision for the year is to unify the Troy High community in all of its different groups. We've started to see this more and more, which we are insanely proud of. For example, yesterday, Monday, November eighteenth, our personal communication classes executed their annual dodgeball event and will have the final teams play on Friday during the pep assembly. We are so incredibly proud of the program's achievements and the event will raise money for task community for social services, the Dodgeball Charity of Choice. On Saturday, Troy High H O S A hosted H O S A chapters, wow, from the surrounding area in regional competition level. I'd like to give a special shout-out to H O S A advisor, Dr. Laura Griesman, and to all the teachers that made their classrooms extra clean for some weekend guests. Additionally, our leadership program is working on some returning events and some new ones. Senior Sidekick will be November twenty-sixth during school where underclassmen draft seniors to spend the day before Thanksgiving break together. Oftentimes, we see seniors dressing up, playing music in the halls, bringing their sidekicks breakfast, et cetera, creating an awesome day at Troy High School. Next, on December eighth, the program will host Senior Citizen Matinee where senior citizens from the community will come for a luncheon and see Troy High Theater Ensemble's White Christmas play. If you or anyone you know would like to attend, please contact Troy High School Student Government or myself while spaces remain. Next from the Leadership and Student Government Program is a brand-new event, Detroit High Culture Fair. With such a diverse student body, we want to provide a space for students to learn about other cultures that they can immerse themselves in cultural exchange. This will take place on December eighteenth during all lunches and students will be able to share and embrace their cultures in a club fair-like event. And the last of many products in the works from the Student Government Leadership Program is Activist Week. This is Troy High's annual charity week and the student body is now voting on the charity of this year's Activist Week. Candidates include the Wave Project, Team Gods, Love for a Child, and Haven in honor of former student Jess Ursuline. And we will have results tomorrow night when the forum closes, so check out at Troy High Stugel on Instagram for that information. From the counseling department, we have Colts Giving, which is a new initiative promoting gratitude and widespread gratitude throughout student life. From peer mediation, we have the annual Toy Drive for Toys for Tots to make the holiday more and more special each year. Thank you to all students at our groups in realizing this initiative of school unity and community given. For fall sports, as the season finishes, our fall sports teams were recognized on all sorts of levels for their incredible performance throughout the season. Cross-country teams sent three athletes to state, Maddie Miller, RJ Hamilton, and Allstate Kian Shaniewa. The Voice Opera team reached regional finals as well as the Voice Tennis Program. And girls golf athlete Madison Mountland reached state finals. The girls volleyball team reached district finals with all region seniors Baye, Cologne, Indiana Ridge, as well as Detroit United Voice Water Polo Program reaching districts. As for winter sports, we have tryouts last week and Detroit United Hockey Team defeated Bishop Foley in season opener game, so congratulations to them. We are waiting for the season to get into full swing, so I will have way more for you in December. Overall regarding athletics, I'd like to express my immense gratitude for and pride in Mrs. Karen Baird, our new athletic director at Troy High School. She works tirelessly to deliver consistent athletic planning throughout the year, which is often taken for granted. And finally, we have our grants at work section. We are looking at the funds that we saw passively last year. We are still undergoing parking lot renovations with the athletic slot under construction and the stadium space will be expanded and we are starting to see some of the new auxiliary facilities being used. As for new furniture, we've been testing new adaptive seating in four classrooms in social studies and English departments. Students have had some mixed feelings about the new furniture, but it's nice to see the grant creating new spaces for students. And last but not least, go Colts.
Are you ready to pilot furniture?
I am not, but are, what's the, what do you hear in the turn of the conversation? Yeah, so I think for our con, a lot of people have found it being a little bit crowded, but it gets very nice when you, your teachers send you and you create a time and then we have options to go sit around. I am not in any of your classes, but I explored these spaces in our student advisory board with Ray Morocoli, the principal of them. That was nice to see. It's perfect for not having the opportunity to actually be in classes.
Have you had a chance to use the athletic fields and the changes, how they might have?
Not yet, but I tell you. Good question. My brother has, he plays soccer and he really loves the athletic fields. He would not access those fields just because it is sort of a precious thing that he likes to hold and you don't want ruining the right way, but access to the rest. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see everyone in full swing at all of those.
Yeah, and then we saw Shrek, we can't say do a great job, so we can't go to Shrek and then see the Spelling Bee, the hilarious show, and then White Christmas, so all the musicals are in full swing. This is also holiday concert season, so you know, you can see bands, orchestras, choirs, all the fun stuff, all the shows. Due to scheduling conflict, this is my last four meetings, so just want to say thank you to everybody. It's been a pleasure to serve with you and good luck to the board.
I just wanted to say, you know, I know I'm going to see you before the end of the year, but I just wanted to thank you for your service for the last years. Been here, my family's been here for seven years and you called them here. School board, I'm a little early, probably with them and I'm just honored to be part of the sword of all three of you. Just hope, you know, getting through you moving forward.
So.
So, I want to start with the district meeting. What I acknowledge that, I'm sure to all of us, several parents, you know, have reached out to me, so I do appreciate people, you know, reaching out. I want to say, you know, Dr. Wucheski went through what the plan is, and the meeting was officially presented in the PTO meeting. That was, because the committee has not finished the board, so that presenting wasn't presenting of the committee itself. And I do just want to encourage everybody, you know, if Dr. Wucheski says the board has not received any recommendations yet, or any, you know, any proposed plans, and so none of us are able to speak to any of that at this time. So my only thing that I would encourage people to do is, once we get that information, if we then, you know, just proceed to the backstage of community engagement, come out and engage with us. And that's all that, you know, that we can encourage the community to do, to do at this stage in the process. And I had a retention, everybody who contacted me, I'll, you know, I'll be contacting everybody in the next couple of days. So I want to, you know, I want to appreciate the community, you know, and the community for engaging with us. I do also want to thank the community for passing the village, and I do want to, you know, congratulate, say well, for whoever, Jennifer Wilson, I just talked to Stephanie Denver. And then on that, I thought it was going to be Mr. Schmidt last meeting, but it turns out it was also Jennifer Wilson. But I think what I wrote applies to both of them. I've enjoyed serving with Carl and Nicole, and I will miss you both dearly. You both took your role very seriously, and gave a lot of yourself more than most people know. I think most people see us at this one meeting, but a lot goes into serving on the Troy School Board and that it just serves as a thing. We attend a lot of conferences, a lot of meetings, we do lots of school visits. We lobby to the state legislature, we lobby to the federal government. As volunteers, we actually, as a group, do quite a lot, and I would say that, you know, in many ways Carl took, Carl took the lead on that, so I think that would be, that would be great in this. And most of you leave a really rich legacy behind, one that includes the preschool that some of their families are a part of, and the new TCH Center, which is not only a benefit to our high school students that are there, but also to the entire Troy community, definitely how English, you know, that's where the English is a second language class that are for adults, and all sorts of things that offer to the community. So I think you leave that not just for the families that are connected to the school district, but for the entire, entire Troy community. But I think I want to say thank you, and you are as a community better for your service.
Last Thursday, November seventh, my colleague, Mrs. Patel, I attended the National Merit Awards at Troy High. We have a record of seventy students, well-deserved, studious, high-achieving, that we honored in our ceremony there. It was an honor to do that again this year. I can remember in years past, we were lucky to gather maybe thirty, but due to the hard work, the great work from our teachers, from parents, now we have seventy who are going on to higher, higher levels of achievement in their life. And I know that our world and our community will be in better hands because of their hard work and their studious efforts in the classroom. The parents were beaming, the students were beaming. It was a well-deserved honor for seventy of our great students that achieved this honor. And even for those who came a little bit short and were not honored for their service as, as one of the National Merit finalists, they deserve recognition too for their hard work and study habits and so forth. But our community and our world will be a better place now because here we are with more students who have achieved a much higher level of learning, and we're in a better place right now. Don't you agree? Thank you.
All right. I'm going to try and not repeat what colleagues have said, but a lot has happened since the last board meeting. I believe it's only a month ago, but I of course want to start off by thanking Preston Smith, Secretary of Mr. Hoff, and Dr. Wilson for their years of service here. Kimberly Twenty-five, with some over twelve, thirteen, and over six for Dr. Wilson, and definitely the students and the community for your years of service. You've been great mentors to me from the day you appointed me career staff, and it's a kind of extremely fortunate to be working with you guys who have so much knowledge for and dedicated of our members. We will definitely miss your knowledge, advocacy, and commitment to our students and to our Since the last meeting, several of us attended Michigan's People's Conference, and we've learned a lot of things over there, mainly to do with technology use, improving school lunches, esports, developing better teachers and so on, and our Dr. Wilson and Mr. Schmidt have presented as well, and quite a lot. Thank you so much for everything you do. November first, we all celebrated the Ballot, and happy Ballot for all of those who celebrated. And you was a teacher, professional development day for the community, got to get the day off, this was the whole time. We had that, and we're proud of all of this board working together with TDA to make that happen, so a lot of things like that can happen with this board. Last week, Secretary of Mr. Hoff said we've attended the National Merit Honors, Merit Scholarship Student Retirement, I have a sixty-nine. You have it at quality, but we're not going to fight. But we celebrated sixty-nine of our students, including our Lajah Reza, the best teachers. Proud of every one of our students in our district, and all the teachers and the staff, and the families who helped make these students get where they are. And finally, I want to wish all our families Happy Thanksgiving coming next week. Time to be thankful for all the things we have and we take for granted. Thankful for our health, our families, our great teachers, amazing schools. Spend quality time with your family and relax.
I just want to, so I want to say did not, okay, Mr. Hoff, because it's not his last meeting, I said no for now.
It's just rough.
No, for the grand board, it was the last meeting. You know, it's the...
Wucheski, you, Schmidt, and you, board members, as always, have shared a lot of, have already shared a bunch of what I was going to say, so I'll have to repeat, except for to say that I could save my rise earlier date, and echo the comments of the debate on support and the dedicated service of the three exiting board members, I believe, for the end of December. And I'm going to say comments, for another time, specific to the three of you. That said, I had a chance to referee last night, the aqua game, that was a lot of fun, it was very spirited. Diana had a chance too, and I go with what Dr. Wilson said about Shrek, I had a chance to meet two grandchildren from Shrek, and they said, "Pretty much people." And we have our business prom table that will meet this Thursday at the middle school at eight o'clock. We're looking forward to bringing that as a group of business officials from around Troy, so these are business persons representing various businesses from around Troy. They are our, kind of our sounding board. They also helped us put together our cash program, which is our free internship program. We gave to those individuals on a quarterly basis. Looking forward to meeting with them again this Thursday, as we learn, we learn from them, what they need and want from graduates of the Troy School District, and we likewise have an opportunity to share with them the great things that are happening across the Troy School District. So we look forward to presenting to that group on Thursday. I was going to say, I was going to send you a quick goodbye, and then I thought, "Oh, we're ready." And I was going to say, "I gave you a bye," and I thought, and all of you know I'm a prior up here, so I thought, "I gotta have some fun with this, or I'm going to be boring." So most of you up here know, and because of numbers, you have to gauge it, and so I thought, "Let's go out, hide the numbers." So I kind of thought through some numbers that I think have been really fun over the last thirteen years, and I think they reflect kind of some of the things, the contributions that have been near here today. So the first one, we're going to start with plus twenty, plus twenty, plus one point two, and plus three. That's the increase in weight, blood pressure, A1C, immunization, after the past thirteen years of school board stress. I had my annual visit to my cardiologist last week, and he asked me if owning a business was stressful, and I said, "Yes, but there's this beloved hobby that I've been told to give up in January that is probably a much greater contributor to my life." That's my first number. Then we have two eighty-two. That's the number of meetings since I was sworn in, by my count, I have this three. So that puts my attendance to date at ninety-eight point six percent. I'm out for both meetings next month, so consider that senior skip day, and it drops my percentage to ninety-seven point eight percent, and I think I should still get a good attendance. Okay? Thirteen, that's the number of years that we've maintained a healthy fund balance of above fifteen percent, prevented the youth resort from borrowing, take out our expenses, including for reimbursement for the state, so proud of that. Six, by my count, that's the number of teacher contracts negotiated with my input. Every single one has been a tight spot between what our people need financially and what the state is willing to provide. So it's always been a challenge, but I've been proud to be able to provide good contracts for the last thirteen years. Five point three percent, that's the effective per pupil increase this school year in state funding, and I go to hammer on this again. That is more than double what the governor recommended in February, and I'm proud to say Dr. Wucheski and I went to Lansing March and challenged the state senate appropriations chair, Senator Sarah Anthony, to break with the governor and give us what we needed. That meeting eventually led to a groundswell of support across every education organization in the state, and added four million dollars to our budget this year. That increase helped us white out a million in social budget. So it wasn't a small change, this was literally a difference for us. Twenty-five, that's the number of HOSA residents coming on board relating to education policy, leadership, community building, inclusion, and childhood trauma. I know because when I was, I had insomnia last night at two thirty, I got in my own office and found a book. I didn't know what else to do because I was asleep. I'm actually reading book number twenty, since right now it's called Deep Secrets, Boys Friendships and the Crisis of Connection. You're lucky I'm only getting to it now because it's a great follow-up to the Ageless Generation, and if I was here in January, I'd be working all of the copies right now. I still may work the copies, you know. Another thirteen, that's the number of years I've been the board liaison of Troy Youth Assistance. That's, that TYA connection is like more numbers, like four years as TYA chairperson, seven years as the executive board advisor, one year as a mentor to a large and middle schooler, and then two years as an accidental foster parent for that boy after he was arrested and took him home. So I'm warning whoever takes over as TYA liaison, you might end up with a son out of the deal, so just be aware of that and be positive of that. Sixty-two, that's the number of EP stats sections I've visited in over the years to do unit, not applying stats in market research in late May, and for everyone trying to cry on the AP exam, these sessions have funded these data from district surveys that are used for devoting reactions to requests for two bonds in our sinking fund. Spoiler alert, the surveys actively predicted all election outcomes, but kids had to figure out how to interpret the data and make a record that it actually depressed the election results. Another number from that experience, one, that represents a skinny energetic Troy High sophomore, who came up to me three years ago at the class, and after a job, and they came to work for me. All of you, Nish Palavu, who later became our student rep and varsity tennis star. Oh, and two, that's the number of records I wrote for Nish, that's through his appointment as state president for Michigan, and his acceptance at July eighth summer visit for my new pandemic junior senior. Love that. Love you so much, Nish, it's great. Twenty-six, that's my personal record for the number of classroom visits during March's reading month. And that was, I did that in twenty twenty-two, and it greatly annoyed all my employees who wondered where I was on stage, but it also filled my heart with record, doing, and loved the reading kits. And then another related number, that's sixty-seven, that's the number of picture books over the past five years that I've purchased and distributed to Troy classroom libraries after visiting to read, so I would miss that best. Seventeen, that's the number of state and national conferences I've attended during my time on the boards, including the Michigan Associate of School Board Leadership Conference, the National School Board Association Annual Conference, the Addison Conference in Washington DC, the National People's Color Conference, National Equity Project Training, and Jedi Inclusion Training here in Oklahoma County. Related number four is the number of conference presentations that made showcasing during review. Most, my most interesting one, tracking on this, that represents a grab that TCHS administration flagged for me as needing some help three years ago after he finished high school. It turns out he was secretly living by himself in the family house after his mom did this four years before. I ended up helping him complete the basket, apply for college, pack up his family home in his stores, put him on a plane to Albania, spent time with his mom, had his car returning to close in their house, deposit the proceeds into the bank account. Then I took him up from the airport months later, housed him for three months, taught him how to drive a car, took him to MSU for orientation, and moved him into New York. He's now sophomore at MSU, a full scholarship. So that, that's my most interesting one out of the last thirteen. Six hundred, that's the number of pieces of candy I throwed every homecoming for me. Took me three years to figure out how many pieces I needed to reach the end of this parade route without running out, and then some big numbers. How about seven hundred and sixteen million? That's the number, that's the amount of money I've worked hard to raise for the district across two bonds and one sinking fund election. Or ten million, that's the amount of money saved by purchasing the ITT building and organizing it for TCHS and Community Ed. Related number eighty-seven percent, that's the reduction in TCHS dropouts since our new school campus case arose. Seventy, that's the number of acres we're funding, set to restore and preserve the perpetuity for our care of community as Oakland County Park's largest nature preserve. Related number, two million dollars, that's the revenues the district will realize when this transfer happens at the end of December, and that will pay off by Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund. I'm still hoping the district will use those funds to raise the natural grassland, law park features out of spill buildings, that's why I've been, if I stayed on the board. Oh, and eight, that's the number of beers that the Shepherd who's practically gone since our public survey indicated the community wanted us to protect academic resources. Seven, eight, seven. Okay, I'll stop. Stay with me. Okay. How about my personal favorite sequence? You ready? Thirty-two million, twenty-four million, eight million, three hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty-two percent, and fifty percent. Okay? That's thirty-two million dollars to build a new preschool, twenty-four million in land sales to offset that cost. That was a move that started this whole process when I asked a simple question of administration in annual district vacant land review, and I said, "Can we translate these assets into more strategic use?" That really forces our mission, and that's when the idea of preschool came back to us the following month. So eight million is the resulting mortgage on the preschool because we used twenty-four million in land sales to buy down the cost, and that translated into the self-sustaining fact of facility contributes some of these three hundred thousand dollars back into our K-12 general fund every year. The seven hundred represents the number of kids currently older than a preschool, which makes sixty-two percent the reduction in kid educators entering Troy schools without qualified preschool experience. And finally, the fifty percent represents the reduction in K-12 students being treated for specific disabilities as a result of our preschool. So that's my favorite sequence of numbers, I think, of the last thirteen years. Now one final number, and that's thirteen hundred. That's the total number of dollars the district will have paid me in honorary, because by the time I am, so if you subtract out parade candy and future purchases for that, I think I'd have a whole, like, couple thousand dollars. So make no mistake, this decision does not pay well. I'm just going to tell you that. If I only have receipts, I submit them to business services for reimbursement, but I don't think they'd be a thing. Okay, I'll stop. So my point in all this is that I've had an amazing adventure for the last thirteen years here, and ominous has been said, and I often, that adventure has been because I said yes to anyone who asked me to do something. I want to, I hope one of our kids, if they want to, might not have the description. We'll keep track of some of these numbers, help me see how much impact one person to have on the systems even larger than the Troy School District. So, my wonderful colleagues, the new trustees, joining in January, thank you all for your service, and remember to keep saying yes, because the asks will just keep coming. You know? So with that, we have the December workshop that's planned December 3rd. And that is in the administration building. And then our, we'll be back here, I will be back here, on the December 17th for the regular December meeting, and that will start at 7:00. Did I miss anything?